We are live on YouTube.
Good afternoon, all. Welcome to our April 26th meeting of the Environmental Concerns and Real Property Tax Services. We have a special guest this morning. Welcome to Dr. Nina Shu, who is going to give us a presentation related to loons and that special bird that inhabits our great waterways in the North Country, conservation through the lives of Adirondack loons. I think birds and loons in particular give us a very special signal regarding the health of Lake George. It is kind of the canary in the mine. It is a beautiful bird. And looking at some of the characteristics online this morning, they can spend five minutes underwater, they dive well, they're just a beautiful bird. And again, welcome Nina. Nina is a veterinarian up in the North Country, and we thank you for your presentation this morning. So, Dr. Shu, you're on. Take it away.
Thank you very much for your time. Yes, I'm Dr. Nina Shuck. I'm the Executive Director of the Adirondack Center for Loon Conservation. I am a veterinarian. I do wildlife research instead of private practice, and I also do wildlife rehabilitation. And I'm going today to talk to you a little bit about the work that we're doing with the Adirondack Center for Loon Conservation. I'm assuming that you can see the screen now, hopefully?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, our mission is to promote and inspire passion for the conservation of common loons. And we do that through our scientific research and educational programming. We're using the birds as a sentinel for environmental concerns and for the aquatic ecosystems that they live in. We started our work back in 1998. I started as a volunteer with a group named Bio- Diversity Research Institute, and that evolved into the Adirondack Cooperative Loon Program, partnership of five organizations, including DEC, the Wild Center, Bio- Diversity Research Institute, and the Wildlife Conservation Society, and Auburn International. So then eventually, in 2017, we became our own nonprofit. And now we've been in existence for five years and have grown substantially in the last five years. And so, we're studying loons for a variety of reasons. First off, they're one of the top predators in the aquatic food web. They eat fish, they eat other fish, they eat invertebrates, and so on down the food web. And so, the toxins that accumulate in the water and in the food chain can accumulate to very high levels of loons. So by studying loons, we have a good idea of what's going on in the lakes and ponds and rivers and ocean where they live. They're also very territorial during the breeding season. They will keep other loons out of their territory and come back to the same spot on the same lake year after year. They will defend that territory and raise the chicks there in the same spot on the same lake. Sometimes there are single territory lakes, sometimes there's multi-territorial lakes, depending on the size of the lake. They also live sometimes decades. Some of the birds we've been watching, we banned in 1998 and 99, we are still monitoring. They lived 20 to 35 years. In New York, they're a species of special concern. They are not threatened, they are not endangered, but they are a symbol of wild remote places. And as such, it's a great opportunity to use loons as an environmental educational tool to talk to people about concerns affecting the environment. So all these characteristics make them a great biological indicator. I personally call them the feathered fish. Let's see, there it goes. Can you see this? This is a bird swimming underwater. I'm just going to stop it there. And if you look as it swims, I'll run it again in a minute, their bodies are streamlined, everything about them is designed to decrease water resistance. Sorry. Their legs are flattened and turned out to the side like a frog. And so, and their feet are almost as big as my hand, and they get a huge amount of propulsion underwater just from their feet. But because of their position of their feet, they aren't very good at walking on land. There are numerous threats that affect loons and their habitats, everything from airborne pollutants such as mercury and acid deposition and climate change to human disturbance and wildlife predation. And all of these factors that are listed here, and there's more, are usually related to humans, even wildlife predation, where there's more people, there's more garbage, and more opportunistic predators such as raccoons and ravens and so on. And so, if we are able to decrease our impact to loons and other wildlife, they'll have a better balance in the world and be able to keep it, maintain the populations better. So, over the last 20-plus years, we've been looking at how much mercury is in the loons and also their reproductive stress. And we now have over 100 study lakes in the park. Our mercury research has been funded through NYSERTA, which is looking at the impact of airborne pollutants on aquatic ecosystems. And we're also studying climate change as well. The way we do this is through several different means. One is to go out and actually capture the birds. We use spotlights and playback techniques. We're using the loon calls to call the birds into the boat. So we're using a chick call to bring the adults to the boat, and we're using a adult call, a hoot, to call the chicks into the boat. And they'll literally get within just a couple inches of the boat, and then we can scoop them out of the water with a large salmon net. Then, on the adults, we place these beautiful colored bands, a variety of colors we use, and a USGS aluminum band, so that we can individually identify the birds. And the great thing about these bands is that we can see them from a distance using binoculars. And we've even had photographers on the coast send us photos of some of the birds with the bands, and we've been able to identify which bird it is when they get all four bands. It really helps. So now we know where some of the birds are migrating to. We take blood samples to look at how much mercury is in the blood and also other factors, you know, affecting their health. So we get an idea of the health of the population as well. And we've developed what's called a mercury hazard profile, which is how much mercury is in the loons themselves and where they're being exposed. So we hire field staff each summer to monitor the reproductive stress of the birds. And each week, they go out and look for the bands and let us know what color over what color on which leg. And we're able to identify, like I said, individual birds on different lakes and see that they come back to the same lake year after year. Sometimes they switch mates, sometimes they get bumped off by an intruding person, an intruding bird coming in, taking over territory, and so on. We've also looked at migration, and we did this through several means. One was using satellite telemetry. And this is what they look like. One of our field staff called them the remote control birds. We did this on a very few birds, and here's one, the green one that we did. He hung out on his breeding lake through mid-November. He got his transmitter on August 20th. And November 16th, he was off the coast of Long Island, and then he went down to the coast of New Jersey for the winter, spent the whole winter down there, and then went back to Long Island. April 19th, we had that record there, and back on his territory on his lake on April 21st. Then, they did the same thing with some females in Maine, and found that the females take a little bit longer to get back. This blue one, the transmitter failed, the battery stopped signaling, the mortality signal did not go off. So we think it was a transmitter issue. And so, the females take a week or two longer to get back to their territories. And here's what he looked like the day we recaptured him and took his transmitter off. He was raising a chick with his mate. We also looked at migration in juveniles, and based on a huge sample size of one juvenile, we think they have a totally different migratory pathway. The adult did a beeline for the coast, whereas the juvenile had to learn where he was going, going from lake to lake as they froze up, and didn't get to the coast of Long Island until two months after the adult did. We received some really interesting information from these birds. Like, one bird was migrating as she was signaling, as she was migrating. So she went back and forth to her lake from Champlain for several days. And then, November 5th, we got the first signal at 10:49 in the morning. So presumably, she started flying a little bit before that. By 4:15 that afternoon, she was off the coast of Cape Cod. And over the course of that winter, she went over to Buzzards Bay in Massachusetts and spent some of the winter there. May 6th, she was somewhere in Massachusetts. And May 9th, 8:23 in the morning, we got the first signal. By 4 o'clock that afternoon, she was on her breeding lake. So these birds are making this trip of several hundred miles in a matter of hours. It's pretty amazing how far they could fly. And it takes a lot of energy. We also use geolocators to learn more about where they go. This meant that we had to recapture some of the birds and download the information from this little geolocator that fits on the band. And all these information, plus the, some of the band returns and band recitings, we've gotten, we now have, we haven't updated this map in a while, but 20 to 30 birds that we've been able to document are wintering from Cape Cod down primarily to North Carolina. We did have one band bird that was recited off the coast of Tampa Bay in Florida. And there are numerous other populations of loons that winter all up and down the coast, on both sides of Florida, and up and down the East Coast. But the New York birds seem to center around this area, Mid-Atlantic states. We also have an annual loon census, and many people on Lake George and in the Washington County area participate in this census every year. We have over 500 people that participate. We get reports from over 200 lakes. And it gives us a snapshot of how the population in New York State is doing, so that we can follow trends in the population over time. And we've, we've found that the reproductive rate seems to be going down a little bit. And we think that's probably due to an increase in predation and also to an increase in climate effects on the nesting success. We've also placed nest cameras at numerous of the sites, and these have let us follow things like hatching of chicks. There's a band that were going up on the nest. Some of the birds lay three eggs. They get visitors like beaver and herons, and occasionally bears, like apparently, like eagle omelets, loon omelets. And then, we also documented human disturbance of the birds. And we normally recommend that people stay at least 100, 250 feet away from a nest. And as you can see, these people were not doing that. So we worked with New York State DEC to place buoys and such, and so that we can better protect the nesting sites that have a likelihood of getting disturbed. And that work is being funded through the B-120 oil spill that happened in 2003 in Buzzards Bay. And because we were able to prove that some of the New York birds wintered there, we received five years of funding. And part of that funding is used to better manage the nest sites, protect them with buoys and signage and rope lines and such. And we also will be placing nest rafts in certain areas that are indicated. So, for example, this is a bird that, here's the nest, here's the little island. And you can see, in less than a month's time, over three weeks, we had 10-plus inches of rain in 2015, and that island disappeared. But the nest was still there because it was on a raft. And then, just a week or so later, the island had reappeared because the water had receded. So the nest rafts are a great management tool for areas where they're indicated, when there's a lot of water level fluctuation. We also get a lot of reports of fishing line entanglement. I've rescued several down, not on Lake George per se, but I, but right in the area. There's one on Jade Pond. Actually, I think this is that bird that we rescued from fishing line and have come back and banded them, and they've come back and raised chicks the subsequent year, which is wonderful to know that our rescues are successful. So because of that, as part of the B-120 work and other funding, we were placing fishing line recycling containers and brochures, providing those to interested groups. And I believe that there are some in the Lake George area, and we welcome more opportunities to partner with you and get the word out about the hazards of fishing line loons. And also, lead, lead fishing tackle is a huge hazard to these birds. They, when a fish breaks a line, if it has lead, lead tackle attached, and the loon swallows the fish, they can die from lead poisoning in just a matter of days. And when an adult loon dies, that's really taking the reproductive potential out of, out of the population for many, many, many years. So, in the Lake George area, Fish307.com has been helping us with this lead tackle buyback program. And what people do is they bring in an ounce or more of lead tackle, and they get this voucher for $10 for using it for non-lead tackle, and they can use that at the store. And then, the stores get reimbursed for the number of vouchers that they turn in. And there's all sorts of prizes and things like that that people can win for participating. We also have developed a loon-friendly lake certification program, and we have many lakes that are involved with this right now. This is our second year that we're implementing it this summer. And I think we have 20 to 30 lakes coming up this summer. And we provide a lot of training and tools and such, and things like the fishing line recycling container, and if nest raft is indicated. And so, and then the organization, the Lake Association, usually does cleanups around the shoreline and hopefully going under the water and snorkeling and picking up fishing line and anything else they find in trash down there, and also helping to protect the nest sites and monitoring the loons, looking for, you know, birds that are acting abnormally and notifying us if something needs to be done. So again, we invite any interested Lake Association or environmental group or community group to come join us with this, and we're happy to include you. We also have protecting individual loons with a variety of loon rescues. We have birds, as I mentioned before, that get tangled in fishing line. This usually happens when a fish breaks a line. And they, they catch the fish, and they'll feel the line there, and they'll hang it, and it's hanging down, and they try and get rid of it, and they whip their head, and it usually wraps around their head and their neck, scratch, and makes a mess. Other times, such as this bird, they'll get hooked, you know, by an angler with his casting. And in this case, this bird had a big lure hanging off its wing. We tried numerous times over the winter to catch that bird, I mean, over the fall, and it wouldn't let us. So we decided to just wait until it iced in, and then we were able to catch it. And we also are seeing increasing incidents, thing of which of iced-in loons, which usually these are juveniles, but sometimes they are adults that fail to migrate before the lake ices up. And we're seeing with climate change that an increasing incidence of the lakes freezing later and later. So, instead of getting a hard freeze in November, December, and the birds migrate in response to the freeze, we're having birds stay, wintering on the larger lakes, especially the Lake George and Lake Champlain. And then, then we get a hard freeze in January or February, and we'll get several birds that are iced in. So, for example, last year, we rescued three birds from Lake George. I think it was 2013, we had another five, that, that three of which were rescued, and two ended up, one died, and yet another one, the eagle caught. And then, this year, we had three loons on Lake George and five on Lake Champlain, one of which had been a Lake George bird from 2020. So that was pretty interesting, because we banded it. So, we're doing a lot more work with rescuing, and we're, we'll be setting up rescue teams across the park. We're hoping to have one in your area, so that when a bird needs to be rescued, we can get to it sooner, and then they would meet us with the bird. We can do a physical exam on it and treat it as needed. We're working also to develop funding for establishing a loon rehabilitation center in Newcombe, New York, at SUNY ESF's Adirondack Ecological Center. And we chose that site because they have private lakes where we can set up pens for rescue, for rehabilitating the birds. And it's a pretty central location, so that if a bird is rescued in the Old Forge area, Lake George area, up our way in Sarnac Lake, we can all meet there and do a full evaluation. We'll be working on funding for a veterinary trailer, so that we can do radiographs and blood chemistries and so on, and treat the birds as needed. So, this is a big project that we're going to be working on. And if you have suggestions for funding sources to make this happen, please let me know. We use the information that we're collecting, we publish it in scientific papers, and we also bring it to policymakers. So our work with the mercury research has helped implement, has helped provide information for implementing regional policies, state and regional policies on regulating mercury emissions, and also on, it's contributed to national policies on mercury emissions and acid deposition. And Bio- Diversity Research Institute also works globally on the impact of mercury pollution on a worldwide basis. And we take what we're learning, and we bring it down to these little, we call them science summary papers, so that people can understand better what the actual science is. And these are engaging papers that people can download off our website and easily learn from about this, you know, what our science is telling us. We have a variety of other outreach mechanisms, signs that we place at the boat launches, public presentations, our newsletter, the Adirondack Tremolo, comes out a couple times a year, and we do now monthly email updates. And we also, we also have a loon center in Sarnac Lake, which I will go into in just a minute. Our work is supported through a variety of grants and donations. Some of our supporters have helped us for many, many years. And we have a lot of individual donors as well that have been with us for 10, 15, 20 years. So we're very grateful to all those. We receive a lot of in-kind support as well. And the support, you know, lets us do so much more. We're able to work on a variety of private lakes as well as the public lakes, and it's made a big difference for our work. And as I mentioned, we have a loon center in Sarnac Lake. We just, this last summer, we moved to a large place that is going to let us put up educational exhibits. We're working with some museum exhibit designers right now. And we will soon have, over the next three years, we'll be establishing a series of 30-plus exhibits that will follow the year of a life of a loon, so that people can learn about what a loon is doing throughout the year, and the conservation threats that it faces, and the environment it lives in, and then what we're doing to address those threats, and how the people can help also. Right now, we receive 6,000 to 7,000 visitors a year at our loon center. We're hoping to expand that in the future as we grow. So, happy to take any questions, if you have any. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Nina. That was excellent. Do any committee members or anyone have any questions relative to, to our loons supervisor?
Thank you. And I'm not sure that the doctor can hear me, but I've been in that loon center. And if you miss, if you spend any time in them, one of the things that really struck me was they had some skeletons, some of the loons, who holes in the breastplate. And I'm sure the doctor could talk about this, but it was just an amazing facility. I'd like it to be here in Warren County somewhere. I'm pretty sure we can do that. But it is a really cool thing for anybody who spends time in the water. It's a great spot. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, our, our ultimate goal, one of them, is that we would have satellite facilities in, in Lake George, Lake Placid, and Old Forge, you know, the high tourist spots in the Adirondacks. You know, that's years down the road, but that is a goal. Again, the big limitation right now is funding to, you know, it takes a lot of money to set up a place and, and get the exhibits set up and so on. So, we're doing things gradually in one step at a time, and it's let us come far. The interesting thing about loons is that people think they're so beautiful and such, you know, peaceful birds, but actually, they're very, very territorial, and they're very aggressive toward other birds, toward other loons and ducks and geese. And that bill is a huge weapon. They can puncture each other's sternums, and we've had loons die from puncture wounds. A lot of them recover, but there are some pretty impressive videos on the web about the fights that loons have. So.
Any further questions? Yes, supervisor, yes?
Yeah, the impact of bald eagles in the Adirondacks on loons, what's that interaction?
So bald eagles are one of the primary predators of loons, or they will eat loon eggs, they'll eat loon chicks, and they'll eat adults. And so, you know, the thing with any wildlife population is there's checks and balances, so that the population doesn't overgrow. And, you know, loons, like eagles, I think were one of the species that were affected by DDT. Because anecdotally, you know, I've spoken with many, many people that lived here in the 60s and 70s, and they never saw a loon. And, and they, the population started recovering in the 80s, and DDT was banned in the early 70s. So, the population in New York has grown to the point where now we're estimating around 2,000 birds, adult birds. But it's getting to the point where we're seeing more, just even in the 20 years I've, I've studied them, we're seeing more territorial conflicts, where we have intruding loons coming in, trying to kill chicks and take over territories. And so, you know, there's a limitation there on population growth, and predators such as bald eagles also are a limiting factor. This year, and the population of eagles has grown substantially too. There are eagles on almost every big lake as it is. This year, it's going to be really interesting, because eagles are one of the species, like other raptors, that are being affected by the highly pathogenic avian flu. And I know there's been a couple birds, a couple eagles that have been sent down to the DEC's Wildlife Pathology Unit to find out if they're, that's what they died from or not. But it has affected lots of waterfowl up in the Plattsburgh area and elsewhere across New York State in the Northeast. I mean, it's affecting hundreds to thousands of birds. Loons don't seem to be as affected by the avian flu, but they can have it. So, but we, you know, as far as I know, we had a discussion of this in one of our rehab meetings the other day. And so far, they've only documented avian flu in three loons over the last multiple years. And, and we will be testing them this summer also to check for that.
Any further observations or comments from anybody? I think one, one observation on my part, the, I, just as a neophyte, you know, I would say, when you, when you, when you say you've experienced some growth in the loon population, it would seem to be indicative that the health of the lake is probably improving also in general terms.
Exactly.
Which is a good sign for, for, for Lake George. It is a good sign for, for loons, I would think.
Right. Yeah, and it's, it's very true. You know, like I said, in, in my lifetime, people are so much more environmentally aware, and especially of the impact of pollutants on ecosystems, whether it's terrestrial or aquatic. And, and just that environmental awareness has reduced or the amount of pollution that's being put out in the earth, you know, both, both in the Northeast and nationally and on a global level too. You know, there's a lot more regulation of pollutants, and, and wildlife species have recovered from pollution for the most part, or for many causes of pollution. There still are some pollutants out there that are causing problems, like the flame retardants and such. But now they're facing other threats, as I mentioned before, like climate change and a lot of human-induced threats. Case of loons, we've had birds that have been hit by boats, lead poisoning, the fishing line, human disturbance of nests and birds, chicks. You know, people like to follow these birds because they're pretty, but they don't always understand what the birds are saying. And there's what the birds are saying and, and there's um, a call, they do the tremolo, which is a wavering laughing call. Uh, but it's actually a distress signal and I've been sent videos of uh, you know, really pretty videos of like a pair of loons with two tiny chicks between them that are constantly swimming away from the photographer and they're tremoloing non-stop. And the photographer was clueless that he was bothering those birds. So, you know, one of our big efforts is to increase um, awareness about wildlife behavior so that people know when it's okay to approach a bird and when they're disturbing them. In some cases, the birds will approach you and hang out with you, which is fine. They do get used to people, they do get used to boats. Um, especially if you're out on the same lake, in the same boat, day after day, they'll, they'll get used to you. But um, you know, it's important to know when they're upset and to, to give them their space.
There was, I thought, a very interesting uh, article in one of our local publications, uh, and, and a great picture of you Nina, uh, rescuing a couple of loons, uh, on Lake George. Uh, and then I believe you, uh, according to the article, transported the, the loons, uh, to Lake Champlain to a water body. So, it was a, you know, had a, had a very happy ending, that, that story, so.
Yep. That was probably the, the pair that were rescued at the end of January and then two days later, we had another one on a different area of Lake George that had been iced in. So, that one also went to Lake Champlain. Yeah.
Any, any other further questions from any, anyone at all? I, I want to thank you very much, Nina, for your
Sure thing.
contribution to our meeting today. It was very, very helpful and uh, we wish you, uh, and we wish the loon population and yourself the very best, so.
Well, thank you. I hope that you will stay in touch with us and feel free to contact me if you have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye Nina, thank you.
Supervisor Kramer.
Thanks Chairman, that was a great presentation from Dr. Shush and I'm happy to have been here, but I have to go unfortunately. Um, but it looks like Supervisor Seber is back to keep our quorum.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you, my apologies to the committee.
Thank you very much Claudia. We are we have something?
Real quick.
Okay. What, uh, what do we have as far as?
Just go ahead then.
Please, please, yeah.
Okay, um, under action of giant um, agenda, there is a resolution request to enter into a new contract with Northco Products Inc. Um, for the plotting of our county tax maps we do this yearly, um, to provide to the towns as well as to the county. So, the quote is, they were the lowest um, quote that I got for one thousand seventy-two dollars and seventy-three cents. So, I rounded the resolution to one thousand one hundred dollars.
Great. Could we then get a move by Supervisor Dickinson? Do we have a second on that? Supervisor. Girasi, yeah, thank you. On a second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anything else next?
So, next is a resolution from the county attorney's office. Resolution request to amend uh, resolution forty-two of nineteen eighty-six to be able to provide the chair of the board authority to execute replacement deeds for properties obtained through tax foreclosure after November fourth of nineteen eighty-one. I'm not sure if Larry wants to speak to this.
Sure, briefly, my office since November has been receiving a number of requests for my office to provide a replacement deed. Um, for many years, the county, uh, when they issued a tax, a deed from a tax foreclosure sale, did not require the purchaser to provide the uh, proof of filing fees and actual, actually require a filing of the deed as a result. Often deeds never got filed with the county clerk's office and the ostensibly, uh, the individuals who own the property and continue to pay taxes on the property do not become aware that the property is still in the county's name until they try to convey the property, sell the property, or for some other reason, become aware that they don't actually have a filed deed. Just looking for an extension of authority that was provided back in nineteen eighty-six and that it would be more open-ended and not time-limited so that my office in coordinating with the treasurer's office and the director of real property does not need to do individual resolutions each time an individual comes forward uh, with this type of request. And just for due diligence, my office confirms, often we actually find a copy of the original deed. And we always confirm proof of payment and proof that property taxes are current on the property before we, in the past, have made that recommendation.
Did you move it? Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Seber. Again, the, this is a motion to provide the chair of the board the authority to execute replacement deeds for real property obtained through tax foreclosure after November fourth nineteen eighty-one, when the original deed was not recorded and is lost and proof of sale and prior delivery is confirmed by the county attorney. So, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Thank you. It is approved.
Next, um, item number three, um, is another resolution request coming out of the county attorney's office to authorize the chair of the board of supervisors to execute a quick claim deed and transfer documents on behalf of the county to Aqua Logic. To provide a deed from the October twenty-first, twenty seventeen public auction. Um, Aqua Logic was the highest bidder. Um, but the deed was never delivered nor filed, um, due to lack of signatures on the uh, documents from the buyer, um, nor have they paid any of the recording fees um, for this property. They did reach out um, to both, actually to a few offices, the county attorney's office, my office, as well as the board of supervisors' office. Um, so, the county attorney's office kept a resolution. Larry, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, briefly, uh, no sooner do we put together the resolution to give my office authority to issue replacement deeds than we and we had believed that it would apply to Aqua Logic, but it was pointed out by the director of real property that there was no deed to replace because the deed was never actually issued um, in twenty seventeen despite proof of payment. So, as a separate resolution, because this is the first time out of the cases I've handled since starting where there was, it's not a replacement deed, it's just it was never issued. Uh, we're asking for a resolution to allow the chair to sign the deed to Aqua Logic because the original authorization expired in twenty seventeen for the chair to sign deeds from that tax foreclosure sale.
We get a motion by Supervisor Dickinson, uh, seconded by Supervisor looking for a second here. Supervisor Seber, thank you Supervisor Seber, all those in favor?
Excuse me?
Question, go ahead, yeah.
Wait, are we on discussion?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Rachel.
Thank you. I just, I, you know, I picked up my information unless this was emailed out and I just didn't catch it on my email. I don't see anything about this particular item in it. So, I mean, I'm, I'm more than likely just going to abstain, I.
The resolution request is the last page of the agenda package that went out and I believe if the supervisor abstains, there won't be sufficient votes. Because there's only four members for quorum present, so it would need to be all four members voting to issue the deed to Aqua Logic. Um, because they are intending, they have been intending to complete a sale of the property and did not become aware of the title defect. And rather than going through the long story of why they didn't realize they didn't receive the deed, online is they did meet the requirements other than paying the recording fees back in twenty seventeen. And um, again, we're just looking to help them receive title to the property that they paid for in twenty seventeen.
In just response to that, I mean, I'm looking at the four twenty-two document that was emailed out online. And I'm doing a quick comparison.
It should be, again, uh, in my package, the resolution request appears as the last page or the next to last page of the package and it's after the proposed resolution of the prior.
Right, okay, I see that here. Just so you know, online, like the first document doesn't have anything under action agenda for one or two, and then if you scroll down past the background for the loons presentation, there's another document which is different than the one that was printed, but it does look like it replaced another.
I think what happened, they
Go ahead Lexi, yeah.
Both of them are together. Environmental Concerns Agenda is first and then Real Property comes second. So, the environmental concern was only two pages and then you should see on the third page would be another agenda for Real Property.
Okay.
Um, and that's where ours started. I may have sent out a revised version. Myself.
If you just give me one sec. And I guess, can I, may I ask a, just a follow-up question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, sure, go ahead.
Uh, for our county attorney, I understand the, the resolution that we just did to authorize the chair to sign into these, but this one you, one was from like the eighties that you referenced needed to be updated, but this one's from twenty seventeen. Was there a reason why from twenty seventeen until now we didn't have that in place or does what you just took care of address both?
Um, the current resolution that's before the board falls outside the scope of the prior resolution because this isn't really a replacement deed because the original deed was issued in twenty seventeen, so it was never lost. So, maybe I'm being super technical, but it was brought to my attention that Aqua Logic never actually received a deed because it was never issued by the county despite them paying for the property um, at that time. And under the twenty seventeen tax foreclosure resolution, the chair had authority only for fifteen days to, to issue the deeds and that time has long since expired. And again, the issue only became, we only became aware of the issue very recently when Aqua Logic was looking to close and their attorneys, I assume, advised them they didn't have title to this property that they were looking to sell.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Hopefully that doesn't happen all too often.
Okay, go ahead Supervisor Leggett.
Thank you, but it was on the books that this property was owned by Aqua Logic.
They, they in effect met all the conditions that were in the prior resolution that would authorize us to issue a replacement deed. Except no deed was ever initially issued on this one particular property and it was just before the county changed its policy to require uh, the payment of the, I believe it was just before the change in the policy. Um, but I, I guess that's neither here nor there for purpose of this discussion.
So, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, all those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Carrie, so, I think so.
So, uh, next, under discussion items is delinquent taxes on properties sold from the foreclosure. Should have included in your packet a small list of properties um, that the county attorney wanted to discuss.
Larry, go ahead.
I'm going to defer that discussion for a month. Those are properties that we pulled i- in part because there's a legal issue regarding the um, death of the titled owner. We're working on a legal opinion that I'm hoping to issue soon. I just haven't been able to finalize it. And um, I think the legal opinion will probably address most of what I'd address on the record to the committee right now. Uh, maybe we can follow up with any uh, questions or concerns next month, once the committee and the entire board have the opportunity to review the legal opinion, but as of right now, there's a number of, I, I guess it's best to leave it at, there's a number of properties that are delinquent that my office has requested to be flagged for legal reasons and are therefore not in the current year tax foreclosure proceeding.
Thank you very much. Anything else Lexi?
Yes, then there is one more items under referral slash pending items. Um, I had spoke with you guys last month about Queensberry Parcel three oh three point eight dash one dash fifteen. It's on Queensberry Avenue out near the industrial park. Um, Supervisor Dickinson had requested that I speak to um, Queensberry Land Conservancy. So, I did reach out to them. I spoke to Leon Steves who further looked into this property and said it would not be anything that would be usable for them. Um, he felt there was, um, it was too wet for them and it's not anything that they could afford to be able to pay taxes on. If they were not using it for public use, then they would have to pay tax. So, it is not anything they would be interested in. When I had originally brought this property um, last month to committee, my original request was um, to get the consensus of the committee to see if we should take it before the board or if just the committee could approve um, to put this in our tax foreclosure sale. Um, I've already spoken with Kevin Hayjos. He did not feel it was of any use for the county. So, we were just looking to move forward with putting it in the foreclosure. It is something that we had foreclosed on a long time ago. Ourselves, it was, I want to say it might have been part of the old Earl Town properties. Um, and it's just north of where the armory is over there in the industrial park and the other piece that runs out on Queensberry Ave. It's all one piece now. So.
Good luck. So, you're looking for a resolution to, to put it in the auction?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I need a resolution to do that, but um, it's just something that I wanted consensus. I didn't want to just stick it in without authority to be able to do that. So, but we did look into everything and it isn't anything that would be of any use to the county for anything that we have.
Well, I should just go ahead and put it in the auction, Lexi. Sounds good. Very good. Anything else Lex?
That is all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I want to check the dime.
Don, did you have something, Rachel?
I did. I just wanted to say thank you to the county attorney's office to have those draft resolutions included in here so we can see that language is very helpful. It's nice to see those, those presented to us in committee like that. So, I know that takes extra work, but thank you for doing that.
Thank you Rachel. Don, do we have any comments from anybody?
Hi, Chairman McDevitt. No, there's nothing on YouTube.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Dickinson. Motion to adjourn Supervisor Dixon, seconded by Supervisor Girasi. All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.